To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. All right, we'll go ahead and call the regular council meeting to order and we certify that we have a quorum. We have a full team today, so that's great. Can we go ahead and start off with the reading of the treasures report, Linda, please?
Treasure report, September 9th, 2025 payable checks in the amount of $540,693.56. There are 13 major vendor checks representing 86% of the payable checks, and that amount is $483,065.48. Payroll for August, payroll ACH for August 29th, 2025 includes Social Security and Medicare, $227,986.32. And the grand total payable checks payroll is $768,679.88.
Thank you, Linda. Do I have a motion to approve the treasures report, the August 19th minutes and the payment of the bills? Motion by Glenn, seconded by Reggie? Clarification, discussion, call and roll, please.
Glenn?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
George?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to old and new business, we're going to get into some employee recognition. But first, I'd like to give Tim an opportunity, if you'd like, to introduce your team real quick before we get started with the event evening.
Thanks. I've got a full crew tonight. We're really happy to be here. I've got Finn, David, Sebastian, Hunter, and Tim. They're all here working for you tonight. We're really happy to be here.
Awesome. Well, welcome back. We're great to have you back. Tim carried the weight there in the summer while you guys were gone. He did a great job. But I know he's glad to have you all back. So, thank you very much for what you guys do. I appreciate it. All right, we're going to get into the part of this evening that is the fun stuff, and we're going to go ahead and recognize some folks. So firstly, I'd like to go ahead and please call up Lisa and her supervisor to the front, please. All right, Lisa, I'm going to put you right here in the center, right there, perfect. All right, before I turn it over to our supervisor, Fred, I just wanted to, again, you know, we've done this a few months already now, and this month's selection is just another great selection and indicator of the amazing folks that we have within our, within the city that does things for our community. And so this month's Employee of the Month for the month of September is Lisa Christensen. And real quick, I'm just going to really read the letter real quick, just so you can kind of get a great understanding of what she means to us. And so first off, dear Lisa, congratulations on being selected as the St. Robert Employee of the Month for the September 2025. Since joining our team in February 2023, you have continually exemplified the qualities that define exceptional public service. Your dedication, positive attitude, strong work ethic make a meaningful difference in the daily operations of our finance office and in the experience of every resident you assist. You constantly go above and beyond in your role, taking on new challenges with enthusiasm and ensuring that every task is completed with professionalism and care. Your ability to serve our residents with kindness, patience, and respect reflects the highest standards of our city. And I, we, want you to know that your efforts have not gone unnoticed. It's employees like you who helped make the city of St. Robert such a special place to live and work. I am grateful for your contributions and proud to recognize your outstanding performance. On behalf of a grateful city, we thank you for your service and congratulations again on this well-deserved honor. So, before I turn it over to Fred, I know I stole a lot of your thunder, but it's okay. I wanted to read that because it's important. So Lisa is going to get not only the letter, but she's going to get a certificate for a day off. She's got a little gift card here from a special place in St. Robert, one of our local businesses. She'll also get a city coin. But most importantly, because she's already been taking super advantage of it, is her parking space out back, right? Like every day I come in, her car is there, parked in that spot, ready to go. And so, we just wanted to say thank you, Lisa, for all that you do. And so Fred, do you have a few words, please?
We are, we are truly blessed to have Lisa with us. She did start February, she started February 15th, and anybody that knows utilities knows that is the busiest day of our, of our month. And she came in, that was her first day, and she never left us, which was a godsend. We were operating with three people in the front office, and that was it when we got hurt. And so I am very thankful that you were with us, and I'm glad that you stuck around and are just part of family.
Thank you very much.
All right, Lisa, I'm going to give you the coin and your gift card. Don't lose that. The receipt's in there. And then we're going to present you with your certificate. We're going to take a quick photo, if you don't mind. All right, perfect. Fred, come on in. All right, Lisa, do you have a few words you'd like to say to everybody?
I do. So, I was telling the mayor that the wars are great, the day off of pay, you know, the gift card. Oh, that's wonderful. But the, what was written, what was said, was meant the world to me. And so I really appreciate your guys' value. And also, it's a team. We front desk ladies, I mean, scrambling here, scrambling here, scrambling here. It's, we all pull together and work together. So it's a team effort, definitely. So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Congratulations. All right, next up, can I get Gary up, please? And we'll bring Steve up too, if you don't mind. Gary, if you don't... So, I'm going to let, I'm going to do a reversal this time, because I'm going to allow Steve to start it off. Because the things that I'm going to present to Gary is something that he may or may not know, but we're going to surprise him with it, even if he doesn't. So I'll save the best for last. But Steve, if you don't mind saying a few things about Gary, and then we'll go ahead with the presentation.
Well, I think last Monday or something, Gary had been here for 40 years. So, he's been here quite a long time. Come with the furniture is what we say. He's, I think he's well-rounded. He's worked in just about every department. I know when we started mapping our water system, because a lot of our old water lines was never mapped, they were just built. Gary was here, he kind of remembered it. So, he helped us go through and map all of that. Very beneficial employee.
Just to think remarkably how one person can be with an organization for 40 years is just truly remarkable. And so that's why today we're going to present you, Gary, with the proclamation from the city of St. Robert. And we're going to have our extraordinary emcee read the proclamation. So Walter, can you please read it to us?
I can, Mayor. Hear ye, hear ye, the City of St. Robert, Missouri proclamation honoring Gary Hammitt. For 40 years of dedicated service to the City of St. Robert, whereas the City of St. Robert recognizes the importance of honoring individuals who longstanding service and unwavering dedication have left a lasting impact on our community. And whereas Gary Hammitt began his career with the city on September 3rd, 1985, in the water department, and played a vital role in developing the city's early water infrastructure. And whereas, over the course of four decades, Gary had served in multiple departments, including the park department, sewer department, and new construction equipment department, bringing both versatility and expertise to each role. And whereas Gary's knowledge and dedication have contributed significantly to the development and maintenance of the city utility systems, having helped build and map much of the water infrastructure we depend on today. And whereas, with the merging of departments and the city rapid growth, Gary became the senior heavy equipment operator, and later on September 22nd, 2017, was promoted to street department supervisor, leading the largest division within the public works. And whereas, in his current role, Gary ensures that equipment and operators are in place daily to support the city infrastructure, growth, and maintenance need. And his leadership continued to play a critical role in the success of the public works department. And whereas Gary Hammitt, 40 years of dedicated service to the City of St. Robert, stands as a testament to his commitment, reliability, and deep knowledge of municipal operation and utility. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, James Breckridge, Mayor of the City of St. Robert, on behalf of the city council and a grateful community, do hereby express our sincere appreciation and highest recommendation, commendation to Gary Hammitt for his exceptional service, steadfast, fast leadership, and enduring contribution to the City of St. Robert. In witness whereof, I have here to unto, set my hand and cause the seal of the City of St. Robert to be affixed this ninth day of September 2025, by the Honorable Mayor of the City of St. Robert, James Breckridge.
Thank you, Walter. Appreciate it. More than that. And also, what it doesn't say in there is today, September 9th, is officially Gary Hammitt Day in St. Robert. Additionally, too, we're going to present the most, well, one of the things is you're going to get a day off. Well deserved, right, for sure. And then, wanted to make sure we give you with a city coin and say thank you, Gary, for, for all that you do for our city. You are a rock star, for sure. So, would you mind doing the photo now? Absolutely. Steve, if you don't mind coming in and... All right, perfect. I'll take that and hold that. What, you got a few words you'd like to say, Gary, please?
I don't know what to say. It's been an extremely wild 40 years.
Well, thank you very much for all that you do, Freddie. Oh, Gary, can I do a round of applause, please? Can I get, everybody, the family column up, please? I want to do a group photo real quick.
While we're waiting on the mayor, Gary, because we're celebrating Gary Hammitt Day, we have the park put together a little presentation for you that will be on the jumbo truck in the park.
Oh, that's cool.
Very cool.
That's cool.
Anita, can I grab a photo?
So you be sure and drive by there and make sure you know what's up.
There's your day off. Thank you.
Just stay there and watch it for a while.
Thank you. One more round of applause. All right, if I could please get up here, the next order, oh, first off, want to announce the, we already made the presentation. We do that always, you know, maybe a day or two before the beginning of the month. But this month's Business of the Month for the City of St. Robert is Master Donuts. And if you were able to come out, you got a free donut. So, yeah, you missed out. Next up, I'd like to do the September 25 yards of the month. I'd like to have Charles and, who else would you like? Walter? It's just you? Okay, come on up. If I could please get the families, Mr. and Mrs. Richard Long, Mr. and Mrs. Jesse Moore, and Mr. and Mrs. Hans Gregor, please come on up. So these are, while they're making their way up here... Okay, no problem. Which ward, Charles?
Ward 10.
Ward 10, okay. I'll give those to you, put those behind you. All right, so the Ward 2 September of the month, please. How are you? This certificate Yard of the Month is presented to Mr. Richard Long. It's with great gratitude that the City of St. Robert recognizes your diligent efforts to our mission as homeowners and citizens of our awesome community. Thank you for being good stewards of your home and making our city a lovely place to live in. Award this ninth day of September 2025, City of St. Robert, signed by me. Charles, would you like to say a little, few things real quick?
Yeah, me and Mr. Richard Long go back a long way. He's a retired military enlistment. But he served in Washington DC and various other locations, deployed. And I appreciate the way you and your wife maintain your yard, and from the gratitude and heart for the community of St. Robert. Thank you.
There you go. Oh, that's, that's from Lowe's, for your yard? It makes even more special that you're an MP too, right? So all you engineers and Marines in here, get a shaking hand and hold that. There you go. All right, congratulations. We love our Marines. Thank you, Anita. Appreciate that. All right, I appreciate it, everybody. All right, we're going to go ahead and move into 3.4 on the agenda. This is a resolution authorizing the city administrator of the City of St. Robert, Missouri to apply on behalf of the City of St. Robert, Missouri for federal assistance from the Land and Water Conservation Fund Program. Yeah, everybody that needs to leave that was just here for the presentation, you're more than welcome to, or you can stay. You're more than welcome. Anita, can you please go over this a little bit?
We are applying for a land and water conservation fund grant. It's 50/50 for skicable courts. This is the parker's rendering of it. It'll also have parking over here, and then it's going to have a cover pavilion while they're waiting to play, you know, because I'm sure we'll have a lot of people want to do that. And then eventually we'll put a basketball court down there. Was that in there?
Yeah, I think the most important thing is, Steve, you can tell your parents that if we get this going, they can come back and play, right? Because, did they ask you about it when they came? Was that you?
No, that was, that was my in-laws.
Your in-laws, your in-laws came, yeah. So this is for the grant, correct? Anita, we can't move forward with the grant until we do this? Okay. Are there any questions from the, I've been kind of intimately involved in this with Archer Elgin, in the planning and the selection of it. This is just one step of many projects that we want to do grants for, but this is just the first one that popped up. It will be completely fenced in to prevent, you know, ball from flying out, have the cover thing for people waiting. It's very, it'll be very similar, but not the exact to the one that they have in Ralla. So, the first step is we do the grant, and we got to do a petition, right, Anita?
Right.
And then if we get the grant, and then we, because of that and the petition, then we can move forward with the funding and stuff like that. We have had Rotary of Pulaski County commit funds, no dollar amount listed, but they said they are willing to help out with it as well. So, go ahead, Glenn.
Did you say it was a 50/50 matching grant?
50/50, they pay half, we pay half.
So there's two different prices that they have. It's just going to depend on which one we will go with, whichever the parks and regs decide to go with. There was one that was like $189,000, which was concrete or asphalt, thank you. And then the other one was a little bit more expensive, about $400,000, which was the, the good tennis material, stuff like that. So... But that's still to down the road. We got to get the grant first before we can move forward with any decisions. But good question, though. Thanks. Anything else? I knew you were going to say something else in here.
We didn't have to do environmental on it, Jeff said. So, I know like on a TAC and TEE grants, sometimes it's debatable if we save money with the grant. But Jeff said since we didn't have to do the environmental, we'd be good on this one.
Okay.
What property?
So it's right next to the skate park. So there's a plot of land between the skate park and the community center?
That land's already in the LWCF. I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, it's okay. What was the question?
He wanted to know if it was based on her...
Is it based one or based two environmental? Probably just a base one.
We're not having to do one. That land is already in the LWCF area from the ball field. When they built the ball field, they put the whole hillside in that ground. So...
Any other questions before we move forward? Okay, Carrie, can you read it as a bill, please?
You need to vote.
I'm sorry?
You need to vote on the resolution. I mean, it's just one.
Oh, it's just, oh, so, oh, we don't need to read it then? I guess I read it then, right? Or is it just a resolution?
I think you just need to vote.
Okay, sounds good. All right, well, can I look for a motion?
Yes.
Motion by Michael Myers, seconded by Michael Myers. Clarification, discussion, call and roll.
Glenn?
No.
Michael?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
George?
No.
Okay, and that's it, Carrie? We're done?
That's it.
Okay. Motion carries. Moving on to 3.5, this is ordinance authorizing the purchase of a Solair air compressor from Air Capital Equipment for the Public Works Department. Steve, do you want to talk about this a little bit? I know the one we have that's out is like 20 or 30 years old, so...
It's, it's a 1988 model. I think the city probably bought it brand new back in 1988. Service well. I did budget this year to, to replace it, and as the quote was coming in for it, ours actually went down. And we found out that it's pretty much non-repairable. So now we're kind of without a compressor. I don't know how fast this will come in. I know we have a need for it in a couple of spots before the weather gets too cold. We have to blow up the sprinkler system and, and the pool and all that stuff. So we'll have to see if it can actually come in.
Okay. And city council members, any questions for Steve? How much was budgeted for that particular piece of equipment, Steve?
Right at pretty much the same thing. I think we, I think our budget was 30 or 31,000. And it come in right at 31,829. So there's enough in there, those stuff that we budgeted, that didn't, didn't max out the price that we budgeted to actually cover.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions? Do you have any questions? Yes, go ahead, Michael.
Mayor, this is a critical piece of equipment. If, if you can't get it fast enough for the blowing out of the pipes and stuff for the pool and such before freeze, because I'm hearing that our potential first frost is mid, late October, I recommend we expedite shipping if necessary.
Did you get a quote on expedited shipping, or is shipping not an issue?
No, shipping isn't an issue. It's just availability, how fast they can get it from the factory. Worst case scenario, we may have to, I'll see if they have the demo model they can bring down, or if we might have to.
Okay. That's a great point, obviously. The first frost coming up, we want to be prepared because we don't want the damages to the pool again. So, okay, great question. Thank you. Anything else, Linda?
If you needed to, could you borrow one from City Waynesville?
Yeah, we can check and see if local city, or if somebody closed that one.
Yeah.
Good idea.
I mean, it'll probably be here, but...
We have compressors, but they won't put out enough air to actually do what we need. So, yeah.
I'm sure the City of Waynes will be more than happy to help us out if they have one. So, great, great point. Thanks, Linda. Anything else? All right, Carrie, can you read it as a bill, first reading?
Bill number 25-081, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a Solair air compressor from Air Capital Equipment for the Public Works Department.
All right, can I get a motion for the first reading? Motion by Glenn, seconded by Walter. Clarification, discussion, call and roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Second reading as a bill?
Bill number 25-081, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a Solair air compressor from Air Capital Equipment for the Public Works Department.
All right, motion by Linda, seconded by Michael Myers. Clarification, discussion, call and roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Third reading as an ordinance, please.
Ordinance number 4191, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a Solair air compressor from Air Capital Equipment for the Public Works Department.
Motion by Charles, seconded by Reggie. Clarification, discussion, call and roll.
Glenn?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
All right, moving into section four of the agenda, comments by Alderman. We'll start down with Glenn. Do you have anything for the, for the group?
Not this time.
Thank you. Michael Myers?
No.
Mike Hanks?
Yes, actually had a fairly new resident in, in our section today, power outage. And very quickly, the city helped her navigate through the system. The city responded and hired a thrilled, satisfied customer in the City of St. Robert.
Did she use Hometown Grid? Yeah, fantastic.
We're moving, we're moving forward. Thank you, Gary. Fast service.
Yep. Awesome. Thank you. That Hometown Grid is awesome. Walter?
Nothing at this time.
All right, thank you. Reggie?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you, Linda?
I have a question.
Sure.
Hey, Steve, how much longer you think the dog park will be closed?
I, I have no idea on that side.
Oh, I thought that was you that was spraying it.
I do have to take care of dogs.
Okay. I'm not the only one spraying it. So, we're looking at the, I believe it's the 15th? I'm sorry? I believe it's the 15th, no, 26th this month. 26th this month.
So was it 30 days from the day we closed it?
I think it was actually 45.
45 days from the day, because we put the date on the flyer for the closure. So that way people knew when it was. So 45 days from that day?
Yeah.
Okay, well, got it. Thanks, Travis. All right, great, thanks. Charles? George? All right, moving on to comments by the administration. Is Kendra here?
She's not here.
Okay. Anything from her lane, Mark?
They've got soccer going on right now, and they're signing up for volleyball. That is for girls and boys up to sixth grade. And I know just in the first couple of days of signing, she already had 26th grade students signed up. So, our program has went, in two years we've had, this is the third year, they went from 20 students the first year to 50 some students the second year. We're anticipating quite close to 100 students this year. So, it's the only feeder program for a high school and middle school volleyball program in the area. So, anybody that wants to get signed up, call WSRU Sports.
Awesome. Thank you. Sound like a radio commercial there, aren't you? Anything? Ricky, transfer station, you got anything for us? Give us our reports, please?
I got the 104 for August. We did 4,272 tons, an average of 203 a day. And we sent off a trailer a couple weeks ago to Monday's trailers, and it's ready to pick up. It's already done. So we had a little bit of welding job done on it, so we're, we'll get that trailer back tomorrow. That's all I got.
Hey Ricky, what's a good day? What's a good number to have? What's your prime number that you'd like to have every day? And it can't be zero.
Anything over 2, anything over 200 is a good day.
Okay.
That's, that's, the four drivers that take the trailers to Hartville, that's, they're to keep up with that.
Okay. I just wondered, because you have to say how many it is, and I'm not sure what's a, whether that's good, or, so anything over 200 is good. Okay.
Ricky, is that improving those, protect that particular company, those drivers? Are you seeing a little more success?
Yeah, they did, the last three days, they had five drivers, just to keep up. I think we did 219 yesterday, 190 today. They got behind last week on Thursday. They had two sick, so that made, they dropped down to three drivers. Trying to make up on that, they, they didn't have the five drivers to come in right out on Friday to make up one day. They, we had a little bit of time each left on the floor. But, I think they had five drivers last couple days.
Rick, go ahead. Oh, what's the status for the trailer that Jack had, Jack's had?
Oh, the red one? They totaled it.
Okay.
They totaled it.
So how does that impact?
They're, they're sending us a check for $64,000.
And that's from business insurance, you're not the city?
So, that I do not know, because our insurance took over it. And that's who I was talking with. So, I'm not quite...
I'm giving up.
But I thought, the contract, correctly if I'm wrong, I'm kind of, isn't he supposed to carry insurance while he's using our equipment? Yes?
The update that we got today from our insurance was, because of the need of the trailer and the quick man... and the quick manner, our insurance was, they totally, they're going to send us a check for, I want to say sixty-two thousand eight eighteen, or something close to that. That was with the deductible, deducted from the trailer. Then they are going to go and get that money from their insurance, so that way we can get a trailer in hand quicker.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's my question, because I was concerned about the city losing money on it. Yeah, okay.
Quick question about, um, shredding for, uh, citizens of the community, is that only on Tuesdays, is that correct?
Um, shredding, we can do three days a week. So it's Monday, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays, um, like eight to twelve.
Okay. I just had somebody ask me about, um, that, so I didn't know the answer, so... Okay, great.
Fall cleaning up's coming up.
I was just getting ready to ask that, do we have that scheduled?
Yeah.
Six and seven.
Of October?
Six and seven.
For St. Auburn, and then Thursday and Friday for Waynesville.
So that would be the tenth and eleventh?
I think it's...
Nine and ten.
Nine and ten.
Yeah, nine and ten.
The flyer is on our city Facebook page. Some, whoever did it did a fantastic job. Came out great.
That was Mark.
Mark?
It's a cat GTP.
It's a great flyer. Yes?
Are you, are you going back to normal hours? Have you cut your, your hot day hours? Do you go back to normal?
Not right now, we got this hot spill coming up.
Okay.
And I didn't knock it down, I just had the guys come in normal time, just in case another hot spill come. So then we can just go back, and everybody's still putting their trash out at six o'clock, so we didn't have to change nothing.
Okay, so you're just running the, the hot day hours, probably till whenever you decide you don't have to, correct?
Right.
So I just want to put that out, because there's a lot of questions.
Yeah. It's, I figure it's a lot easier for the citizens, just leave it as it is, and it's all done, and then we can go back to seven o'clock, and then we don't have to change anything.
Just please let us know, so that way we can get it out on the Facebook and social media and meetings and briefings and all that stuff. Thanks, Ricky, appreciate it. All right, Mike, you're up.
Sir. Good evening. Quick rundown, we had a hundred and, uh, ten incidents, uh, for the last thirty days. And we had one structure fire recently on Creek Drive, that we got in control fairly quickly, uh, thank God. Kitchen fire, destroyed some cabinets and appliances, but it's still at home to sustain. And just Sunday night, we worked a whole snout of body, we had that on fire in the back basement. And we got it out after time, and we find it there, so, uh, done very well. Um, we're still working on, uh, getting the hydrants finished up in what I want to call Zone Three, so they're right there on the C Highway right now. Actually, I think they've moved on around, they're on the out road down Point Lookout, coming back, so, um, we're pushing to get those down here, uh, quickly, uh, they're all behind that zone. They got a hand by doing inspections earlier near the weather, they couldn't get out, so they just kind of got backed up on that, so...
Yep.
Um, quit, for the most part, doing good. I still got to get the ladder taken up to, uh, Eureka, to the, the crack, and well fixed, with eyeball that gives. Not leaking real bad, it's got to be done. We're kind of holding on right now, because four woods ladder down, and they've asked us to be, uh, ready to go for anything they got out there, which we already went out there, I think that was two Saturdays back, and did some of it off a little bit, that construction worker out there at the hospital, wasn't it? At the hospital, and did them off there. So we're kind of just waiting to help them out, you know, to get it up there. Somebody asked us, you know, is your, and I said, not today. So, um, other than that, and else, it's going to be good.
Awesome, thanks, Mike, appreciate it. Go ahead, thank you.
Hey Chief, I see your breakdowns by zone. Uh, just a quick question, does it stay pretty level as far as your calls, or do you see an influx, or should, or is, or are you down?
No, no, it's staying pretty, pretty steady right now. Uh, we, we should probably cap off with about, I'd say about, I'm going to say about twelve hundred runs, twelve fifty, you know, should, should. Uh, probably things will take up, whatever, now when there's going to, you know, being pulled and stuff like that. There's really no line reasons, it's kind of, it's all over the place, you can have potential problem, but it's been staying steady like that.
And you say twelve hundred runs, is that based on a year, or is that based on...
No, based on a year.
Based on a year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I think twelve, seven, five were in the last year.
Sure.
It's under thirteen hundred and seventy, which is, which is pretty for a five car.
Absolutely, okay. Outstanding, thank you.
Any other questions for Mike? Thanks for all you do, Mike, appreciate the work, thank you. Uh, Steve, you're up. Come on down.
Uh, just, uh, a little update here on pump station six. Uh, we have two of the actuator valves, uh, they started acting up. Um, getting quite a bit of age on them, we do have replacement ones. Um, but it's not quite set up yet for that, we're waiting for the, the service rep to come down, and he's saying that it'll probably be here in a, a week or two. I worked through some wiring issues on that, so... We did take the bypass pump down there, it's in place, hooked up, ready to go, because we're down to one motor there, just in case we need it. That bypass pump's big enough that it will actually, um, it'll pump the whole, the whole station with that, with none of the motors running, so, so it's good to have it in place and ready to go in case we need it. Um, over the week, uh, the weekend of the sixteenth, we had a power outage on Big Hill and Lane. Um, I think it was due to some trees that was actually grown around the power line. Um, I think it was a secondary line, so I think it ripped a hole in it, uh, caused that. Uh, so that kind of, I think we had to replace about forty foot of, of that triplex to, to get that back, uh, up and running. Uh, we had a water main break in the White Oaks, uh, State subdivision, due to, that's some old line in there that's actually glued together piping. I think it's probably the only section in the city that has glued, uh, water main. Uh, there was, of course, there's no bedding on it, it's from back, way back in the day, and it had a huge rock bulver on it, probably the side that's probably pulled out. So, uh, we did get that, uh, fixed fairly quickly and, uh, taken off, and I was able to use the hometown grid and put notification on there that power outage or, uh, um, water main break and may experience low water pressure, and everybody that called in was able to see that, or called in or text. It's, it's sent it right back to them.
Yeah, that's cool.
So it worked out really well. Um, we repaired a couple of street lights in, uh, the Sawmill subdivision, that we, we did not know were out, um, but we did get those, those fixed, and hopefully, um, I did put out on web page that, that number, that, uh, hometown grid stuff, so hopefully everybody sees that, and will start using that. Um, we did get more of the stormwater, uh, pipe cleaned out over my Chevy, only to find out that it's collapsed, so that we filled it all back in, abandoned that, and I think Archer's now is looking at, maybe rerouting that or something. The problem is, it's so deep, so he's going to try to maybe take some flow off of it to another direction, shallow enough a little bit, so, that's all I have.
All right, perfect. Just so, just to be clear, so you, we, when, you can do a outage of a street light on hometown grid?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Perfect, a street light outage. It won't call us out immediately right then? Like we said, in wait, before this, the next business day for the guys to...
Perfect, Steve.
Thank you.
Any questions for Steve?
I got...
Go ahead, too.
Uh, parking lot of Chubbies, uh, what, what are we going to do about that?
That is actually MoDOT that is looking at that, that they don't want to do anything until we get our, our portion corrected. So if, if we end up having to lay a new line or something, we're going to be digging it up right there anyway, so it'll probably be us to get back.
Okay, uh, update on the water wells out of Ridge Creek, how, how are they doing?
They're, they're okay. I mean, winter's coming on, that always brings, um, you know, chances for, for something to happen. They're, I mean, last year we had a frog, we had an issue, not very many, only twice, where I guess somebody thought they was painting the electric, so they went out and shut the heaters off, and they froze off, so... So we, we try to watch out for that.
All right, thank, thank you.
Yeah, cool. Anything else? Thanks for all you do, Steve, appreciate it. All right, moving on to section six, comments by me. I'm going to be very quick, uh, because we have a few more things. I just want to let everybody know that, uh, this past twenty-eight August, on Thursday, we did a, the city represented a retreat ceremony in honor of Brigadier General Lennar, the Deputy Commander of Fort Lennarwood. He's moving on to be the Deputy Division Commander out of the thirty-fifth, uh, uh, US Army National Guard, but, uh, they honored him. His replacement is Colonel Lovax, um, so, very familiar with the area, so he'll be a great asset, um, to the community for sure. Um, for... Just a reminder, turn off your phones.
[laughing]
Um, just a reminder for those that are in retirees, the retiring dinner's coming up this weekend. Anita, are we doing Plasky County Growth Alliance, or have they made a decision?
No, we canceled that.
We canceled it, okay. All right, thank you very much, appreciate that. Uh, just a reminder, those that want to go support the Casa Light the Night Dinner on seventeen October, please let Anita know, um, so we can get names and consolidate that. Now that's, uh, five-thirty in the evening on seventeen October. Uh, trick or treat hours for St. Robert have been put out, or starting to see a slute shortly. St. Robert's trick or treat hour is going to be from five PM to eight PM. And we had a very great meeting with the Chamber of Commerce for about the Veterans Day Parade, uh, so we're moving forward with that. We all know it's going to be in St. Robert this year, so same route, pretty much same thing as last year. Uh, thanks to Travis for getting the poppy thing kind of measured out and stuff, so we're looking forward to that. So what it was with the Chamber of Commerce did crochet poppies, and they lined the Arubidoo Bridge, but we don't have a bridge. Um, so what we did is we came up with a way to kind of use stakes of some sort, you'll see it, it makes sense, but, uh, thanks to Travis for doing all the legwork on that, so that way we can did, display those poppy sea, or poppy crocheted flowers on the Veterans Day Parade. Um, and the last thing, MML. So if you are going to MML, Anita will let you know what time we're linking up on Sunday, uh, right out unless you're going to go on your own. And then just make sure, um, ready for a good time? Any, yes?
Mayor, you have a, an important announcement today.
Oh, I do, thank you very much, yeah. So we were, we weren't able to do, we, we didn't think we were going to be able to announce it today, um, but I'll go ahead and read it to you first off. So this was basically, uh, a, 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 a few weeks ago, Beth Wild submitted the City of St. Robert for the Best of the Best feature in the November and December twenty-twenty-five edition of Destinations Magazine, which will celebrate standouts in adventure, culture, entertainment, food, beverage, festivals, and events. It's more than recognition, it's visibility where it matters. If you're selected to be a nominee, uh, what we do is we get featured in print and digital editions of the Destination Magazine, we get seen by top travelers, planners, and decision-makers across the country, and we're highlighted at the twenty-twenty-six ABA. And ABA stands for the American Bus Association. And so this, it's a chance for us to brand the Neon Park. Well, the American Bus Association is the industry's most trusted motor coach group travel, group tour association, representing members in Washington and throughout the United States. They offer legislative and regulatory support throughout the year. ABA provides education, business opportunities, but really they represent two-thirds of all coaches, coach buses, on the road in North America, and has the largest group of motor coach decision-makers. And we have been selected as a, um, to be featured as a best feature for the magazine for November and December of twenty-twenty-five, due to Beth's hard work in getting our submission in, so definitely, she's not here, but definitely a run-up across from Beth. Um, but we won, and so we look forward to seeing more about what's coming about for the Neon Park. And, and again, just every week Beth sends me an email or a message saying that she met someone else. There was a couple last weekend that was celebrating their fiftieth wedding anniversary, they were staying in St. Robert for the weekend, because they were going to spend their fiftieth anniversary at the Neon Park that evening, so, uh, pretty remarkable, I wish I could have met them, but pretty remarkable, folks, so...
I have a question about the Neon Park.
Yes, ma'am.
Have we checked anymore to have it uncovered so that they don't get damaged like they did in that last storm?
They didn't recommend us doing that because of the moisture that the signs, uh, would get from the feathers.
Oh, that's too bad.
Okay, good, anything else? All right, um, we are going to go into a closed session, I need to brief the Aldermen on something that's going on, so nothing emergency, but I just want to get the, uh, Aldermen briefed up. So we're going to go ahead and vote to close the meeting. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I got to go down the horn, I'm sorry, thank you, Walter. Mark?
I've just been working on new website, trying to get that up, a day or two ago. Um, go live date scheduled for October tenth.
October tenth?
Yep.
Awesome, thank you for all the work you've been doing on that, pretty great stuff. Fred?
Uh, we're just, um, too busy with the customers up front, uh, and then, um, on the payroll side, we're getting ready to get time to tenants up and going live by the end of this month.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Dana?
Um, Anita, Mark and I have started doing the webinar training for applicant stack, um, so we're trying to get that rolled out, and we're really excited about it, so...
Applicant Stack is the new job search thing that we're doing, right?
Yes.
Yeah, gotcha, okay.
And, uh, we have an emergency repair we need to make that goes over my dollar amount. It is, uh, forty-five thousand two dollars and ninety-eight cents. It's out at the gas pumps.
Steve can tell you more about it, but the head needs to be replaced and, um, on the unleaded and diesel side, and right, right now, just off and on, it'll track how many gallons you're getting, which for us, it wouldn't matter, but we have other people that, you know, get the gas, so we need to be able to do that. What else was it gonna do, Steve?
Um, well, I mean, it, it, it does quite a bit of that now. What it is, is the, the controller that's there now is outdated. They're having to find old ones and cannibalize them to repair ours, so they said, they're running short on parts, next time it goes down, there's probably no more parts, so this is just an upgrade that, that probably needs to be done. I was gonna try to budget for it for next year, but it just, it went before its time, so. And this actual controller that you, you, we put our, our codes in, and, and it allows you to get fuel, plus it'll, it charges for that department, so when Fred can, uh, pull it and run the ports, it'll tell exactly what time the states, what part.
States do, and which vehicles.
Well, yeah, we want to make sure we're able to track what we give not into city vehicles. Glenn, go ahead.
Yeah, Anita, have we heard anything about a nine-eleven, uh, ceremony or something going on in Waynesville or St. Robert?
No.
Have we heard anything about it?
Mayor, Glenn, real quick, all, all there is is, on our half is, we're gonna be setting the flag up at six-thirty in the morning at the Waynesville High School, when the kids come in, they'd ask us to do that, and then I think it's nine-thirty, we have to line up us and PD and any ambulance or, you know, any of that services for, um, East and Free. So that's the only thing I'm aware of that's going on, so we're, we're kind of messed up with that, as far as the big ceremony, I haven't heard.
Who coordinated that, do you know?
What's that?
Was that coordinated by?
The school district.
The school district, okay. But there's nothing that the city will be involved with?
No, no.
Okay.
No, I mean, just, just us and the PD and stuff going to the little parade we're gonna have with the, the trucks honoring, so, yeah.
I, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Linda.
Do we have any finance report, like how much taxes we took in, or who our balance is?
Well, I haven't had my computer for two days, so I can't give you a report on what came in for the sales tax.
Okay.
Yeah, we gonna get Tom to help us out, Anita, two, two days, that's kind of, that, that's long. So I know Don's on vacation, but we talked about this at the last city council meeting, having a backup, and so I think Tom would be a good person to have on the call, so. Because we need Fred's computer.
Oh, yes, please.
We don't have a backup?
Well, we do, but I'm not sure, did we ask?
This has to be above her knowledge.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, it'd probably love her skill level, so.
She can probably back up if everything's working fine, but when something's broken down, she probably doesn't know how to fix it.
It's a troubleshooting, yeah, I agree with you, so. Anita, will you?
Yeah, hard work, yeah.
We, we need, we need Fred's stuff, we, we gotta get, we need to have that information, so. Okay, thanks, anything else, Anita?
No, just been busy with the new programs and the housing study that Mayor Matt's doing as part of the Fort Leonard Wood, uh, study that we got the grant for, and different components of that.
Yes, so tomorrow we will participate in phase two of that survey, just to let everybody know, I can't remember the exact number, but it was over seven hundred surveys were done in Pulaski County. Well, actually it was more than Pulaski County, it was the tri, tri Pulaski, tri-county area, it was over seven hundred surveys, so we're gonna go tomorrow and get an update on, on what they found, so. We'll have some more information for you at the next city council meeting.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And, and we, is there any, any word that's come back on that property that's by the gate, I think we had talked about a couple of years ago? Phase one, phase two, and that, that particular?
How can we close session, just?
Oh, I got it, okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
Uh, Tyce, you got anything?
No, we got the yard actually closed.
Okay. Carrie?
Nope, I don't have anything.
Okay. All right, last call for anybody else. Any alibis? All right, we'll go ahead and vote to close the meeting and go into closed session. Uh, meeting is being closed pursuant to Missouri law, chapter six-ten, point two, zero-two-one, to include legal real estate personnel. Can I get a motion? Motion by Glenn, seconded by Michael Myers. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Glenn.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Walter.
Yes.
Reggie.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Charles.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
All right, thank you, everybody, we're going into closed session, we'll give Tim and his team a little time to tear down. Anita bought dinner, so help.